Technical difficulties.
Goodbye. Not worth it.
I do that all the time, so.
Are you good? For recording?
Yes.
Okay, let's try it again. We will call the September 11th, 2024 Deco Bay Planning Commission meeting to order. Carl, would you please call and roll establish a quorum?
Whitmire.
Here.
White. Morland.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, barely. We've got one. Announcements, we've got some introductions that we'll need to make.
Sure. Is this on? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, good evening, I'm Zach Pals, I'm the interim city planner, I'm a principal at AKS. Helping city filler role of planner until maybe some, so at least we all will be taking over probably for a brief transition, I think.
Oh, I told me to use you as long as you needed to.
So AKS also provides city engineering services to city sort of planning services on the year basis, so nice to meet you all.
Thank you. My name is Landon, I'm the new city planner, city Deco Bay in a full-time capacity. Last week was my first week. Excited to be here and yeah, get transitioned in.
Tell me your county.
Do I on Zach for a few things? I was a county planner in Flathead County, Montana, four years. Me and my wife both from the junior, yeah, spent four years in Montana. Had a little one and decided it was time that we got closer to family, so we're back in the area. Excited to be here.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Is there any other announcements?
No.
Okay. Do we have any meeting minutes? Okay, meeting minutes are not prepared at the moment. So, we will move right into public hearings. Looks like we've got three of them on the schedule tonight, one of which is a continuation. And I've got my quasi judicial public hearing script to read, so everybody strap in, this is exciting. The following statement will apply to all public hearings heard at tonight's meeting. The testimony and evidence must be directed toward the code section citations and criteria described by the Deco Bay staff report or other criteria in the code the party believes to apply to the subject request. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the state land use board of appeals on that issue. Application materials and other evidence relied upon by the applicant have been provided to the city and have been made available to the public. The procedures for the public hearings will be as follows. A, there will be a staff report. B, the applicant will present testimony. C, there will be testimony from those in favor of the application. D, there will be testimony from those in opposition to the application. E, there will be rebuttal from the applicant. F, I will then ask if there is anyone who requests that the record remain open for final additional written testimony. G, if none, the public hearing will be closed. And H, the commission will deliberate and make a decision. There will be no further input from the public during commission deliberations. Are there any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias of commissioners regarding the hearing for us? Regarding Hills of Deco Bay, case file 3 PD-PC-24?
No.
Is there any opposition to any member on the commission hearing this case by commissioners for the public? Hearing none? We shall proceed. Again, this is a continuation of a previous hearing from a specially called meeting back from August 29th, which itself was a continuation of a previous regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. And this is case file 3-PD-PC-24, applicant Hills of Deco Bay. And my understanding is we've got some additional information to review and consider. Would you care to present your report?
Yep, that's right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things to run through tonight regarding this planning file. If you were attendance at the hearing on the 29th, you will remember that the planning commission agreed to leave the record open for two things. One, to receive comments from the fire department. At that time, the fire district still hadn't weighed in on the application. That information was provided to AKS on Sunday, and that was included in the supplemental staff report. And we also wanted to take the opportunity to get the complete list of conditions of approval in front of the applicant for their final review and comment. We've done that, and as part of that final review from the applicant, the applicant has requested a couple of changes to the plans, and we'll go through those real quickly. So, the first, first change requested by the applicant is that the condition of approval that staff originally suggested for that shared use path on the east side of the Morris Avenue was to be 12 feet wide, and that was consistent with the recommendation in the city's transportation system plan. The transportation system plan does acknowledge that that width may not be appropriate in situations where there's excessive topography, which is the case here for the street grades, that are at about 15% or slightly below. And in those cases, there's a lot of exceptions. The applicant requested an exception to move this from 12 feet wide to eight feet wide, and city engineer has agreed to that. So, one that you used to plan to be to, what we're looking at here shows a five-foot wide shared use path, again, on the east side of Morris Avenue, just kind of a zoomed in look at what that's like. That would just be changed from, I guess, prior recommendation of 12 feet wide to eight feet wide. Staff supports that revision. The other revision is to establish different lot setbacks for lots 25 through 34, and those are shown here. And those are requested by the applicants just to accommodate kind of the irregular shape of those lots. The purpose of setbacks is to promote good air and light circulation throughout those lots, and these setbacks are consistently building up standards. So, staff supports that request as well. I think one other thing to add is that because this is a planned unit development, the code provides flexibility from the standard setbacks in itself. So, this, this request is in addition to request for flexible setbacks throughout the subdivision, so that's kind of in keeping in custom with the rest of the lots. And I guess the last piece of feedback that's included in the supplemental staff report is that the fire district has reviewed and is supportive of the applications. They're aware of the street grades and, we looked at, spent some time looking at street profiles at the last, the last meeting on the 29th. The fire district is aware that those 15% grades do exist throughout Phase 2 of the subdivision, and they think they can accommodate that, and that's consistent with city code as well. So, they added kind of their own set of conditions. Probably the one standout is that, and this is also consistent with the original master plan for Deco Hills, that secondary emergency fire access needs to be added prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for most homes, and that's consistent with the Oregon State Fire Code as well. As far as the lawyer, we still have not received any public testimony since, since the 29th. And with that, staff recommends on the commission group.
Okay. Awesome. Are there any questions for Ruski Pals on the staff report?
I have some questions, but I think they're probably more for the applicant.
I do one on the secondary access thing. Has that been addressed at all yet, or has that got to get incorporated into the plans and everything?
Yeah, it hasn't been addressed. I think the applicant maybe gave it to write a little bit more detail about that. We did talk earlier today about that. It's been, again, it's been a requirement from, from the master plan. Yes, I think.
Well, yeah. Good.
All right. Seems like a good time to move on to applicant testimony.
Evening, everybody.
Evening.
My name is Zach Larn, and I'm the main project manager for Hills of Deco Bay. And I care to answer any of your questions about the application, but since the law was raised about the privacy of secondary access. We own the property in Waywatch between 101 and Lilian Lane, and the, the plan for the last handle of years for that secondary access has been to go down to 101 through that property. And then in the recent months, we, to get, to get that road created and intensively get turns and radiuses down to that road, it's fairly expensive. So, we proceeded potentially buying the timberland property to the north of Hills of Deco Bay as a way to provide that potentially as secondary access. So, we're still in the process of working on the part of the hand and adapt to where that can be joined up. But there's some more surface roads that have access through, through our master plan in Hills of Deco Bay that seem very promising. So, ultimately, we know that's a conditional approval. We still have the ability to go down through Waywatch development if, if another option is created that they don't work, and understand the timeline to, to make that happen.
Okay. Looks like the fire department also had, you know, quite a bit to say about the water system and everything out there. My presumption is that everything that's already, I mean, like the new water tank and all that, that's already going to be covered once it's all put together.
Yeah, the water tank is 100% installed, we just have to get to fill it up, and that's something that already got a little bit worse. To do the third springs that it's, that it's not able to, that it's all going to be able to do to make sure that that is all operational. I'm sorry, I'm starting.
How long does it take to fill up a 600,000 gallon tank?
I don't know, I'm trying to figure out that, but I guess more than that every day.
Yeah.
He probably knows.
All right. All right. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
So, I have a question about the shared use, shared use path. Couple of questions. One is that there's exceptions allowed to the 12-foot width where topographical condition born, and it describes the 15% grade that you have in that area. And that changing it for 12 feet to eight, so it would minimize the grading impacts. But I'd like a little bit of clarification about that because I don't really quite understand why, if our goal is to minimize your grading aspects, or if this is just the eight to the 12 foot is not reasonable, or if it's not needed.
Yeah, I think, I think to minimize the grading impacts might not be the best way to phrase it. I would say, you know, the, the 12-foot path comes into place, my understanding, through the transportation system plan, my permissions, for the potential that this section of the road could be tied in with, with the property to the south. And have this kind of as a connector arterial road.
Is that, is that not your property, the property to the south?
No.
Another property?
No, it's different property. So, our responsibility is kind of to prepare that this may be connected to that point at some point in the future. And so, that, that multi-use path, just it comes as part of the transportation system plan, as it doesn't require it for these types of road definitions, if that makes sense. And, and the exception in that code does discuss that on steep slopes and, or topical challenges, things like that, it could be reduced. In this aspect, we have a road that is, you know, 10%, 15% grade. We don't expect, even if this was tied into, to the property to the south, we don't expect this multi-use path to be needed for, for what that use could be for a 12-foot path, for, for multiple bicycles, pedestrians, and things like that. That would be, you know, kind of qualifying the need for a full 12-foot path. So, we want to stick with the code and what the code recommends, you know, and not ask for a whole exception to that in general. But we don't feel like where it has it passes through our base and how that ties into, to the basic down Waywatch and everything else that, that 12-foot path makes any sense to, to be on a small portion of our, our phase 2 that, that play out in the sense.
And you don't see in the future that, that the future uses there, 12-foot width?
No, because, because of how Phase 1 was approved, and even in the Waywatch, up in Lilian Lane came up, there's a lot of exceptions and things that were kind of approved that this has not, it has no continuity through, throughout our phase into, into either our property or potentially to the south, that it would warrant. Basically, it's going to be a start and stop point along this road. So, we want to honor the transportation system plan, but not overbuild something that won't really be a feature that warrants that, that size, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Nathan, if, if I can chime in, I'm back here watching from above. Hey, Zach Gared. Yeah, Zach Gared with Parametrics. Apologies, I couldn't join you in person this week. Speaking in addition to, you know, the discussion of topography, it's, it's not only the road grade going up the hill that we're concerned with, with narrowing the road section here or the, the path there. It's actually where we've aligned the, the roadway alignment, really kind of on the ridge there as we extend to the east with this wider path. And then on the backside of that, we would have our utility trenches, thank you. In a portions of it, we actually are starting to get on to the edge of that ridge to the east, and we're starting to then have issues with our catch slope to the east there. And so, part of it's just a, it's a width and stability issue in terms of, you know, four feet isn't a huge difference, but it is one where we have some areas where we're right on the money and we're, you know, able to have a nice match into existing grade without having any concerns of a, a steep fill scenario to tie back in. And so, this is one in which narrowing the path there allows us to, to maintain what we have with that ridge that we've aligned the roadway with and having that path there. So, it's a combination of not only the, the actual run of the path and the road, but additionally where we are in the scheme of the area beside it to where the lots are in a flatter area, and we're there to the east, starting to curl our way back up the slope to, to our high points on the site. So, just wanted to provide a little additional information on kind of the context for, for narrowing it.
Thank you. Okay, any other, any other comments from the applicant or any questions?
This secondary access doomed? Doomed to find out more about how that would work, because you just mentioned it might be trying to acquire land in the timber conservation area?
Yeah, we, we, it's under due, it's under contract due diligence at this stage.
There is a whole set of those issues. And I'm not up on what the restrictions are, kind of zone. So, that would have to be dealt with. And just said before, occupancy of the first unit, that means that, we'll probably hear this again when they start putting in the first house.
Yeah, to the extent that that secondary access road triggers some review from the planning commission if, if come before you, for.
Well, should we do that now, before we plan to approve Phase 2?
Well, applicant's not ready to do that right now, right? I think there's still some, some work to be done to figure out what that alignment is and, right, about a detail on that design and destruction.
As I said before, we, we still have the ability to do it through Waywatch property that we own currently, and that was a real one of those. So, yeah, there's due diligence and amendment that we need to verify that it works, and the amendment's, or we'll see code and anything else to do.
And that would likely come back as a standalone, standalone application.
For the, for the access road?
For the access road itself, right? So, the way we've got it set up now is that there's a condition that they're obligated to do it, there's still some more work that needs to be done on the sign. But against the extent that that access road does require another review from the city, they will be accurate.
And possibly.
Possibly, I mean, depending on, yeah, depending on what properties are affected.
Okay. Let me just see again. Okay. Anything else for the applicant or from the applicant? Okay. We will move on. Is there any additional testimony in favor of the application? Anybody on Zoom online? No? Okay. Any testimony from anybody or those in opposition to the application?
There's, you know, public complaints.
Okay, I can't tell there's one, I'm not.
Hearing none? There's no rebuttal to be had? Would anybody request that the record remain open for final additional written testimony? Hearing none? Last call for any testimony? All right, public hearing will be closed, and commission will get into deliberations. Any wish to deliberate?
We have deliberated on this one a couple of times already.
Yeah. So, the the fire district stuff looks like it's pretty well laid out, so we'll probably be readdressing some, at least part of that, like secondary access at some point in the future. And it's like all the geotechnical stuff has been that was all, yeah, that was all completed up to what we're expecting to see.
So, I have one more question for Zach over there.
Sure.
Is there any possibility that we decide that this isn't going forward because of, we can't get the secondary access to work?
So, as the way that condition is written, if they can't get secondary access to work, I guess they would have invested all of the money in all the infrastructure, putting on the roads, and plat the subdivision. And even start, start to even build their first home, but they would not be able to get occupancy for their homes. So, that's their risk. The reason we've set it up that way to allow it to be, I guess, to finalize that occupancy is that's kind of the maximum amount of time, that gives them the maximum amount of time to solve that problem, which we think is likely to be difficult. So, I guess, I mean, the short answer is it's, it's a big risk for them, right? And I think, you know, they know that, they've been aware of this since the start, I think, like you mentioned, they've been exploring what options they have. But nonetheless, that, that condition is there, and so it would not give the city the right to withdraw their approval of the subdivision, but it would, it would halt them, their ability to use any of the, well, to, I guess, complete the first home, right, to get occupancy here in homes.
So, there's not really any risk with the city?
The risk is, the risk is pretty much entirely on the applicant, I guess, the risk to the city is that there's a, you know, fully built subdivision that can't be used until there's a secondary access to it.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments? Okay. Anybody here to move? Move an application or move an approval with conditions?
We approve this report with the conditions set forth in the paperwork, modified, so.
Supplemental staff report was. I think there's been a few staff reports.
And I second that for case file 3 PD-PC-24, that we approve it with conditions, with conditions of approval.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further or final discussion? Carl, would you please take the ball?
Whitmire.
Aye.
Morland.
Aye.
Sherman.
Aye.
Motion yes.
Thank you. That will conclude that particular case file for a little while. All right. Next one up, the same script, I'm not going to read it again, but the same script still applies for public hearing. Next one up is case file number 1-PAR-PC-24, applicant Jeff O'Nall, EGV Investments. Yeah. If I can find it here. I believe we can proceed with the staff report whenever you're ready on that one.
Mr. Chair, this is City Deco Bay Planning Plan Number 1-PAR-PC-24, so three, proposed three parcel partition of the property at the southeast corner of Allen and Highway 101. Property's about a fifth of an acre, unit size, it's a C6C1, these all enveloping criteria are listed on the screen here. The configuration of the plan, three parcel partition is shown on the screen. Three, three parcels, which should be accessed via private shared access at the rear of the lot, and that's to keep any new driveways off Highway 101. On that access, it would be 24 feet in total, paved with, within a 30-foot wide right lane, consistent with the city's requirements for a private street. The applicant is not proposing any new structures at this time, only the partition of lots, which does include some improvements along the frontage of Highway 101 and Allen Street. So, there'll be new sidewalks installed along those frontages. Transit District requested that the existing bus shelter on Highway 101 be either replaced or relocated at such time that those improvements along Highway 101 are made. I guess the last thing to mention there is that we did receive a letter from, I guess we received testimony this morning from a public, pointing out a potential deed restriction on this parcel that limits the overall building height. And just had to hold that up, I think it's, I don't know, I don't want to speak, but I don't know what the heck this was. 19.5 feet. There you go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I guess we can let the applicant respond to that, that was new information, perhaps we didn't see that in the record previously. So, assuming that that deed restriction does apply to this lot and is still in place, then yes, that will limit the height of new structures on these three, three future parcels to more than 19 feet. And with that, I will open up for any questions.
Sure. I've got, I do have a quick question. That deed is from 1982, and if it's the property I'm thinking of, it's currently, if I'm not mistaken, it's currently empty, undeveloped, vacant, and do we know if there's ever been any development on, or has it always been empty?
There was a house on it one time. It was, it was a building of some sort down on the, it would be on the southern end of the lot.
Okay, correct. Wow. So, there's a possibility that, I mean, this is from 42 years ago almost, so if that applies, it applies, but we still have to figure, figure that out, is what I'm understanding.
Yeah, and I think this brought up a relevant point in that those deed restrictions, you know, if it is, if it is still valid, that, that is just sort of outside of the city's authority here in this case, right? So, what we're, what we're reviewing are the rules around creating parcels here, there's no limitation, all they've been the city's standard limitations for height and so on. That's what gets applied. That doesn't mean that this restriction doesn't, doesn't matter, it does, it's still in place, and, and the applicant will still be subject to that on their own. But I guess the point is that we don't have to add any separate conditions of approval as we can have this.
Not for the addition?
Yeah, that's kind of what the applicant to, to solve.
Thank you. Ruth?
Well, I guess that was my question, is if this deed restriction, if it was enforced, does not affect at this point the partition?
Correct.
Request?
Correct.
Okay. You have any questions for the staff report?
And then I, and I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I'm confused about this plot, the bus, covered bus station. So, I can't, I'm confused about why it needs to be moved, and if it's moved, it looks like, at least from the drawing, that it's smaller when it's moved? It's so, I'm, I don't understand that, because I thought it was some public property.
So, I believe it is in the, I believe it is in the right order, it will be after, after the dedication of the property, maybe I can come on on that. My understanding is just based on, you know, from the, from the transit district that just asked that it be, and, and this is their words, relocated after, after improvements I've made, and they've kind of in that same, you know, it's a, you know, it's an important bus stop for your system. I believe they, well, I'm, I'm, I'm just being passionate, I believe they'll be okay, just be replaced in the same spot, which is I, and that term, but maybe the applicant can, can tell them like that.
So, I'm confused, Chris, I have one question, the difference between relocation and replacing, and what?
I'm not clear whether they use the term relocated, I, I agree, instead of just saying, put it back in the same place.
Yeah.
And maybe that there's not enough clearance, maybe they've had some, some concerns from ODA that there's not enough clearance to get around, maybe it's too close to the curb. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what they meant, but I, I think it makes sense to put it back in the same spot in a way that meets the standards, whatever, you know, whatever clearance standard. whatever, you know, whatever clearance standards.
Can I ask a question?
Not at this time, not, not quite yet. We'll get to that in a moment. That's okay. But we all good on staff report questions? Okay. Moving on then to, uh, applicant testimony, Mr. Henall, if you'd like to present. And we're, we're sticking with our script, and you'll get an opportunity if you'd like to, if you'd like to speak in a moment.
You need to shoulder, you know, my side?
Okay. There you go, right there.
Uh, I really don't have anything to add other than to the application the way it is. It seems the deed that you were questioning, uh, as far as I know, that deed is going to transfer over to the three new deeds. Each one of those lots will have a deed, right? And that'll transfer right over, because it was on a preliminary title report, it's nineteen and a half foot from the height of the sidewalk. Now, the only thing I'm a little fuzzy about on that is where that sidewalk's gonna end up. Because, I mean, there's a sidewalk here now, but it's clear that ODOT wants that sidewalk removed and a new sidewalk put in. So I'm assuming that we need to get that height done and marked with a monument out there, and from that we'll build a story pole nineteen and a half foot, and that'll be the top of the building's max height. We're actually, from the plans we've got now for the building, we think we're gonna be coming in around nineteen two. So we'll be under the nineteen five. That's gonna have virtually a flat road for it. So that's how we're gonna do that. Uh, as far as the bus stop, what I, I looked at the bus stop, it's not, no big deal to move it, it's just pick it up and, you know, to cut the, the existing bolts that are into the concrete off. My question about that is, and I've got to get engineering, uh, probably you guys or Devco, uh, to do the engineering, and we've got to plan that new, uh, sidewalk that's eight foot wide that goes down through there, and if you'll look on the drawing, you can see where the sidewalk is shown, that's ODOT property. Then that section behind that is about a seven-foot strip, it kind of varies, it's a little longer, I think it, if I remember right, it's seven hundred and twenty square feet that was sold, but from the original owners back to ODOT. So that's ODOT property. So the first line where the sidewalk is being shown, and to that purple line, that is, ODOT owns that. The, from the purple line to the red line is a ten-foot slope easement that ODOT, I've asked them to release that, because there's no slope, it's the craziest thing. They've got a slope easement, and they're like, well, you know, do a, a topographical survey, send it to us, I did that. I've taken pictures, I've done, I said, you have no slope. So I don't, I don't know what we're doing with that, but regardless, from that purple line, because of the commercial zoning, we're gonna have at least an eight-foot setback that we have to do landscaping. Okay? So that eight-foot section there for the landscaping would go, so I may gain two foot there. If ODOT called me tomorrow and said, hey, forget the slope easement, we're gonna do away with that, I've still gotta put eight foot of landscaping in front of these houses. So from the red line back is what we have buildable space. And that is as of now. That may get two foot better, that line, the red line may come uh, west two more feet, but I don't deal with ODOT's, uh, world with them, so, um, I don't, I don't think that's going to change, we're not planning for it to change. Now, the question is, where do they want that bus stop set? Because the bus stop is currently setting where majority of that eight-foot wide sidewalk's gonna be. Like, you may have some history with doing this before, but if we move that back to the backside of that sidewalk, I think ODOT or someone has some specifications, how close that has to be to that curb. Now, if it's all concrete in front of it, which it pretty much will be, if we set that bus stop back, I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem moving the bus stop, but I just don't know where, where it goes. That's, that's my, and, and that's one of the things that we're just gonna have to figure out as we move forward, where does it go?
Yeah, the Transit District will have some standards for how, how it needs to be set relative to the sidewalk and curb. Ideally, it's by behind the sidewalk, and they just need to make sure that, before their wheelchair, the wheelchair buses, the ramp comes out, and there's enough room to get across there and somebody to come out with a shelter and access it.
I think it will easily work on that, on that eight-foot wide sidewalk, I mean, there, there should be more than enough room to do that. If we set that back off the sidewalk, it's going to be in that second section, um, which is still ODOT property.
Yeah, and that's in that ODOT easement, in that ODOT easement, or is that right?
No, that's theirs, they, they own that, right?
Yeah, and if that's in the right way, then it should, should be fine.
Yep, that's theirs. The sidewalk is out there, that's part of the right-of-way from Highway one-on-one, then they actually sold them that strip of property. It's like I said, seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and thirty-three square feet, something along that, that's when we got the preliminary title report when I bought this property, we, we were pulling our hair out trying to figure out what these lines were, because they just didn't have much, you know, no, no history of when they sold it or anything, then we had to dig around and find when it was sold, there was a bill of sale. It's reported in the county, so it's there. And then that ten foot behind it is the slope easement, that's what you're looking at.
Okay. I, I still don't understand, because of bus stop. Because in the drawing up there, bus stop appears to be a certain size.
This is like a
Or am I missing, maybe I'm missing like where it is?
I've never measured it, it's probably, it's probably eight foot, uh, three and a half, four foot deep. It's just a bench and it's like some glass and metal. I mean, the whole thing probably doesn't weigh a hundred and fifty pounds, so we'll just cut it loose, move it back, put a new footing in there for it, and concrete underneath it, and, you know, it'll be the same as it is now, and it will set back.
So, because something I read, like Chris can't find it right now, made me wonder if it, it was allowed to be smaller. That the, the transit company said it could be smaller, and I, I was concerned about that, so I wanted to make sure if it gets relocated, that it doesn't
They had a response in here in the application, and I don't, I'll have to find it, but it's somewhere in the application that said that they didn't have a problem as long as the builder paid to move it. I don't know if it said anything about size.
Move it or rebuild it, and the picture shows it's smaller here, that's
We won't rebuild, we'll just use what's there, we'll just, I mean, it's
They're gonna move what's there, because it's a standard structure, people recognize it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to be smaller and look different.
Oh, I'm, no. I, I have no, no history of rebuilding bus stops, so I don't know anything about them, so it's just for me to pick it up and move it back. The bus shelter is important to Depot Bay residents and visitors. And whether or whether, what else was contacted?
There's nothing in there about size.
Yeah.
Does it speak to specify that it's the same bus stop?
Who is it?
It's on page four of the staff report, or it's got the name of the transit.
Very bottom of page four, yeah. Just, it said, Lincoln County Transit said, "This bus shelter is important to Depot Bay residents and visitors as it allows them shelter from inclement weather while waiting for the public transit bus. I was contacted by residents in the city many years ago to request this infrastructure. That being said, I am, I'm not sure this is speaking here, but that being said, I am not opposed to this develop," oh, I think, Lincoln Transit, I think. "That being said, Lincoln County Transit is not opposed to this development and would respectfully request that developer for the project bear the costs associated with the relocation of this bus shelter."
Okay, so that's implied it's the same bus shelter that's relocated.
Yeah, it saws all the bolts off and moves it back. Two bolts, two bolts.
Can I ask, can I ask? Can I ask the planner a question? So this is just for the partition, but this bus shelter issue is rolled into the partition application. Will this bus shelter issue reappear in a, in a construction application?
Oh, no, it, it should not, because it's in the public right of it.
Okay.
The reason it's associated with this partition is because partition is true, you need to replace that sidewalk.
Okay, so this is, this is where it will appear normally? Okay.
All right. Anything else from the applicant, or questions for the applicant? Um, we'll get to, we'll get to public testimony for, in favor or opposed in just a moment, that'll be next.
Wait. The, I talked with Zach yesterday, before yesterday, and we, we discussed the thirty-foot right-of-way in the back, um, we got, we came up with twenty-four-foot drive aisle, uh, according to the parking diagram from the city's plans, or city's zoning ordinance, for a right-hand turn directly into the garage. We, we were looking at, um, a house length of fifty-four foot, five and a half inches from the front deck to the back wall. We're probably going to go back and, um, cut two or three feet out of that. In that way, I know we've got that thirty-foot right-of-way back to the back, no questions asked. In that way, it's not, it won't be close, you know, we'll be, we'll be over. So I'm going to be over and right in the last minute trying to figure out how to stretch that property six inches, but
Again, that's just, just sort of, that's just a width of the easement, right? Just, and you, you can't build in that easement, but, um, paved with twenty-four feet.
Yes. We're, we're, yeah, the only thing that'll be in that easement will be back to the back property line, the, the retaining wall will be up there. Yes, okay, yeah, we're, we're good with that.
Anything else? Scott? You have any else to add?
No.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, we will have, we can, uh, we can do public testimony now, if anybody wishes to speak.
Do I need to sit here and answer questions, or?
Uh, you can have a seat, if anybody else would like to come up, we can, we can go sit. Uh, testimony from those in favor of the application? Anybody online? Okay, is there any testimony from those in opposition to the application? Come back. Please, uh, come up and, okay, you gotta sign in, that's the same for public hearing.
I can't say that I'm really opposition of it, I just asked a number of questions without it. Sure, please, I, I have three questions, he's already answered the first question.
If you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind, uh, signing in for our public hearing, public comments. Okay. And I agree, there's really good opportunity for, in the, in our script, thank for just questions.
The other expert here, holding up his phone, where is it?
Yeah, my name is Francisco Monaco, uh, I live in Winton, C. I'm actually the person who's on the board for the Flatlands. And so we just had three questions about it, if you can tell me answer the first question on the height. The second question, looking at your drawing, you have the retaining wall, I noticed that it could get some drains.
There'll be drains behind it to capture any water that runs down that hill. Because Depot Bay, in the wintertime, there's water running everywhere underneath the ground.
We have a runoff on ours, but there's a little trench there that comes from the city drain right there, that runs down, right down the side of our property.
Did you see that we, we put a, a vault there to catch that water, and we've already trenched that water? And we have that in a six-inch pipe that's going down on our property, down the side and turning on our property, which is not on ODOT property.
Yes, sir, I understand, I saw that, thank you. I, I just didn't know if when you built the retaining wall, that that was gonna still be able to get past that? Because I can't, my drawing's very small.
Okay.
I just didn't see, I didn't know where the retaining wall was gonna be, retaining wall was gonna be and how it was gonna interface with that part.
That's why I'm trying to cut, I'll cut down the size of the house, we'll move everything forward a little bit. The retaining wall will be back next to the property line, I mean, that's what I'm assuming it's gonna be. And, you know, it'll be a four-foot step down with a step out and then another step down. There'll be landscaped up there where the step out is, but behind all that, we'll put a French drain in there, we're planning to. I'll have to get the engineers to work on this, but that's, that's the general plan, to put a, a French drain down below that to catch whatever surface water comes in there, so it's not coming through the wall, it goes down, captures it, takes it out of that six-inch pipe.
Well, let me put that up, I can answer five questions, I have a question about the retaining wall, I have another drainage, and he's already, he's already answered that.
Well, thank you very much. All right. Anybody else that would like to comment or, or any questions?
Yeah, sure.
It's your turn. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm lucky, because I have such a patient.
We appreciate it.
Regarding the bus stop, because I see the bus stop every single day, every time I sit on my deck.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy, Lucy.
Okay.
Paul.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, this is just a guess, but I've seen it happen multiple times. Where the bus stop is located, it is back from the sidewalk. But what happens is when the transit bus comes and stops at the bus stop, they are blocking the driveway to the motel next door. So that might be why they want to move the bus stop, so that they're not blocking somebody else's driveway. Just a guess.
Sure. I think it's my understanding that, at, at this time, if that bus stop needs to get dealt with during construction, the sidewalk, I think, I think the applicant's gonna be consulting with, uh, Lincoln County Transit and ODOT, and make sure that it gets placed back where it belongs, or maybe moved a little bit if they need to.
Okay.
If it, I, I was, I, I, I haven't watched witness to bus stop, okay? So if I'm sitting out there, bus pulls up and stops in front of it, and the backup is hanging over in front of whale watch, or whale
Their driveway, yes.
If, if it is, then we'll ask if we can move it up. The only thing I won't do is put it right dead in front of one of these houses, because it's gonna be blocking their access to their front door. So we may have to move it up, but that, that's a minor thing, I mean, move it
I know, I was just, you guys haven't seen the location of the bus stop, so I didn't know, you knew that the bus has blocked a driveway when they stopped there.
Well, the engineer's sitting there, we really don't know what the heck we're doing with that yet, but we'll be just kinda, we'll get it done.
You?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, I can tell from the wonderful little minuscule map that I'm drawing, it looks to me on this map that it seems like Allen Street is a through street.
Okay.
Am I correct?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, when I look at it, it looks like Allen Street is a through street. Allen Street is not a through street. Technically, I mean, you guys might think it's a street, but the mini-mark that's right there thinks it's their driveway. And everybody driving by thinks it's their, the mini-mark's driveway. There is a lot of traffic there, because everybody, you know.
Yeah, I just pulled into there before the meeting.
There's a lot of traffic there. And the road only goes up to what would be maybe two feet past where the actual building of the mini-mark is. And it just, they, the mini-mark has blocked it from going any further. They've put rocks and stuff there so that people don't drive up there, because what it does is it, if there's no blockage there, it, it's just a big U-turn behind the store. So they've blocked it, and everybody pulling in parks there. So for these people to have access to leaving on Allen Street, it, it might get a little tricky, because there's also, um, delivery trucks and the garbage truck, they all park there. So it's not really a road that too many people can use.
All right. Did you have something you wanted to?
By, what I was told when we started digging into that Allen Street deal was that that By, what I was told when we started digging into that Allen Street deal was that that used to be a Dairy Queen at one time, and that was the rolling road that went around through their driveway. So, so that's what that was for, but there is two parking bollards up there. Car, you know, stops that, that, the road kinda goes up there and stops, but we'll leave five foot over at least into that, probably six foot with the sidewalk. So there's a sidewalk going up through there too. So there's gonna be a five-foot wide sidewalk that connects to the front sidewalk and turns and goes up on the north side of that first lot.
Right.
So there'll be a sidewalk to walk up to nowhere.
Up to the back of the mini-mart, yes.
Yeah, up to the back of the mini-mart. Just in case.
Okay, but if you put the, you're putting the driveway away from the highway, right?
That would be, yeah.
Yes.
So your exit driveway is gonna be right?
Into the mini-mart?
Right into the mini-mart?
No, it's gonna be to the Allen Street. Those folks are gonna have to understand, that is Allen Street. That is not their property. And, and the guy come out there, the, the guy that owns the mini-mart was under the assumption that was his. And he come out there one day and we had the backhoe and stuff there. He said, "What are you doing on my property?" And I said, "What are you talking about?" He's, "You own the city?" And he's, "No." And I said, "This is Allen Street." "No, really?" He's, "Well, I wondered what this, what..." Yeah, it's Allen Street.
Yeah.
It's a misconception. Everybody, you're exactly right. They all, even the guy who owns it thought it was. So, you know, he was fine after I told him.
So are people gonna, when they're lea- leaving their house?
They're going to turn left on Allen Street and go down the hill, turn right or left onto one of those.
Is there gonna be enough room for them?
It's a city street.
Yep.
Okay.
It looks like a street now at the bottom.
It does. Down at the bottom, you can see the curves, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but there, there's like those streets on them.
Well, that's a problem.
People like me look for street signs, okay? That's all I'm saying. So the city has no plans to actually make Allen Street connect with Allen Street on the other side of Route X Avenue?
Not to my understanding.
Not to my understanding. I mean, I've looked at the transportation plan and seen that, but I don't, you know, we do. We have a lot of streets that don't go anywhere.
Oh, I understand that. I've lived on that.
I do want to.
A while time.
So, uh, with the proposal that we're looking at, at least, you know, half of that street will get some additional development in sidewalks and stuff. So it'll be at least a marginal street upgrade on, look from the looks of it, on the south half, if, if that went through. But it's still, yeah, it's gonna be very early on in the street.
And we're all dead young.
Yep.
Okay.
Another skateboard ramp.
Pardon me?
Uh, I said it'll just be another skateboard ramp.
We don't have that at Winton. I don't, I don't see that many skateboarders in people. Uh, oh, I wanted to know, once the retaining wall is finished, how high will the retaining wall?
I can't answer that, because we've gotta shoot elevations and figure where the floor of the second story is, and then it's gonna go uphill from that. I, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I don't know how tall it is.
Okay.
That'll be the next step. After we get the partition done and approved, then we'll start working on the, the actual house plans and in getting more stuff done. Then I can answer that for you.
So then I get to come back and see you guys again?
You do.
I'm so excited.
We gotta take dirt out.
Oh!
You gotta take dirt out, cause it's slow.
Actually, we're gonna fill dirt in. Cause you gotta go up Allen Street to turn right to get into the property.
Yeah.
So the second floor will be the garage door. So there'll be garage doors pointing towards you guys. And they'll turn in and turn right into the garage. And so that's where their parking is. So you have to have, we need at least two stall parking for each one of these houses. So that's what that'll be.
But I was talking back, back toward the retaining wall, slopes up like this.
Oh, there'll be some cut there, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So you don't know where the retaining wall is and we need to cut all of that?
Got it. Um, just because I don't know anything, how many stories is nineteen and a half feet?
Thirty-five. No, I'm kidding.
Okay, my son has told me a lot of times, Mom, you've got no spatial visual.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be one down low, out the front door, onto 101, the sidewalk level. There's two bedrooms, two baths downstairs, and a media room. There'll be stairs going upstairs, and then upstairs, there'll be the, the living quarters, the kitchen, dining room, once smaller bedroom in the back, then there'll be the garage one at the back with a bathroom.
And it'll be nineteen and a half feet from the sidewalk.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll make sure tonight. That's, that's a real thing. That, that is not, it's not, I mean, it's, it's still there. So it's, it's not expired or anything like that, so.
Yeah.
It, it transferred with the ownership to me, and it'll transfer with the ownership to these other three lots.
So the only reason we're here is because that's one reason we bought it.
Yeah, it's, it's okay. We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Alright, are there any other comments from the public on this one? And I will remind everybody that this particular case file is regarding the lot partition. Construction stuff might be a little bit premature at this time.
Well, and the sidewalk.
And the sidewalk and that.
And the bus stop.
Bus stop too, bus stop.
Don't forget about the bus stop.
Any other comments? Okay. I don't believe there's any rebuttal that you need to address, Jeff?
I'm good. Everybody else?
I think you all ready to rebuttal?
I think so. Alrighty, is there anyone who requested the record remain open for final additional written testimony? Hearing none, the public hearing will then be closed, and commissioners will enter deliberations. Um, I do have one additional question. I'll start off with, uh, for the examiner. What are the, I don't know how easy or quick it is to summarize, but what are the, in, in a C1 zone for partitioning a lot for the, in 152 dot 250, what are, what are the stipulations that are listed out in there? Put you in a spot.
It's a, okay, it's a race.
Yeah, see this first.
Probably less than you could expect.
Yeah.
C1, yeah, I couldn't imagine it being a lot more.
So legal and.
I don't think it's a lot size. I think it's. Sorry. In the car?
Nope. I'll give you my hand.
They don't have them on block size?
There's no.
So the city could go on those little like two-square-foot parks or something somewhere like that? Yeah.
But you gotta build a twelve-foot wide sidewalk. And move the bus stop.
Yeah, it's kind of a lot, but that's.
One right here.
You can let it for your wrist.
I'll shoot you, I'll shoot you a ticket. Before I leave your iPhone, just turn off my.
So, okay, so my question is, what does a, if a partition give this property that, without the partition? Because you could obviously still build the same thing without a partition. What does the partition give that?
Yeah, the difference is that you get three separate fee simple lots. You could put a, you could put a, I believe in the study, you could put a threeplex on there today. On a lot of it is, is it's just one.
Fourplex.
One parcel, you could put a fourplex on there. Um, but this gives the, the applicant right to do is to sell each of those lots individually.
So they don't have to be a condominium, they could be individual?
Yes.
Actually, you could actually, uh, partition that into four lots. They'd only be twenty-five foot wide.
I'm, uh, sorry, I'm gonna, we're in, we're in deliberations now.
I'm just one pair of five in.
Thank you.
No problem.
You're in trouble though.
You got shut down pretty bad.
I haven't had to gavel anybody yet. Okay, any other deliberations amongst commissioners on this one?
I wanted to deliberate a little bit more about the bus shelter.
Sure.
So I wonder if there, I, we could consider a condition where we specify that the bus shelter is either the same bus shelter moved, or if it gets damaged, possibility is it gets damaged beyond use in the process of moving it. Unlikely, but it's possible that a, a similar bus shelter of the same size and a rest of it would be installed there.
Is that an appropriate commi- uh, condition to consider? Or is it relevant in this case?
I would expect that there are specifications for a bus stop, and it probably changes as that one was built. Which means that that one might not be qualified to go back. Once it's moved, it becomes no longer compliant. So I don't know, but I would expect that conditions of bus stops changed in the last twenty years. So it might have to be a new bus stop, but I don't know. And I don't remember anything. I don't remember anything being there that's sticking out in the moment, because I drive out all the time.
On the property?
Yeah.
It's vacant, it's just blackers.
Well, I'm not talking about the property, I'm talking about the bus stop, because it's supposed to be sheltered, and I don't remember seeing anything. It just doesn't stick out. Maybe it's too far away from the road, which makes less sense of it. Most bus stops are run on the curbs.
Yeah, we, uh, we found a street view, we don't see what's there.
I don't see it. I don't even see it out there.
You don't see the bus stop?
I see the bus stop marked, but I don't see the shelter.
Bus shelter.
Oh, the shelter, I hope. The shelter's behind the sidewalk. No, it isn't actually with that.
Okay.
Or, okay, so add on to that comment, then what about the possibility of, if it happens to be replaced, if it's damaged, that it's replaced with our current approved bus shelter? Whatever the current standards are.
I don't think, first of all, because that's ODOT or IDAW, I'm not sure we control that.
Yeah.
And so I don't think that's our jurisdiction, frankly. And I suspect that whatever Lincoln Transit would wanna do with their mind on another side. So I don't know that we need to specify anything. He's, he's not gonna get decided on.
He's not gonna what?
He's not making it decide on, go there, that some agency, your old owner or something.
But Lincoln Transit's kind of fresh there.
Well, they, they would like to see the per one stay, but if it doesn't, and then they may not have a choice either. So we'd have to see, but that's not our property anyway, so I don't know that we care.
Well, I care, I care.
I know we do, but I don't know we can't.
It is part, but it is, it is part of the partition application. It's specified in there, so.
If I could just interject so quickly in response to your question. These types of condition, these types of requests, I guess, are kind of on the kind of borderline, like the C's code for private. So the city reaches out to these various agencies for comment. In this particular instance, the Transit District said, "We would appreciate if the applicant would pay for the cost to relocate it." So I think, um, they are okay with the shelter, the condition of the shelter as it is. And I think their, their expectation is that the applicant just be on the hook for replacing or relocating or replacing wherever makes sense. And that, that I expect it moves a new, a new boundary pattern. So I think that's kind of the extent of the scope of the improvement that the Transit District is looking for. And if they were interested in new shelter or something, if this was deficient in that, then something that they kind of.
So then I would ask, like, what are our conditions of, do we have a condition at all about this bus shelter as part of the partition?
Yeah, we have a kind, it stated that they are agreeable to the request from the Transit District, which I think is to, to pay for the cost of relocating or replacing it. I think it's important to, to establish that that's their threshold, because it could be the case that there was some, you know, relatively time-consuming and potentially costly permitting of ODOT that needs to happen for that. And then it's the, you know, it's the applicant's responsibility to work with the Transit District to sort out who, who pays for that permitting. I think it, it's just up to guess kind of what the Transit District meant, you know, based on, based on the information provided. So I, I guess my sort of, I'm sure it was a long way of saying, I, I would, I would recommend that you would stick closely to the, um, the request from the Transit District that was to pay for the cost of relocating.
I tend to agree with, with Scott's assessment that, I'm not sure how much the city has to do with the bus stop at all. Between, between Lincoln County Transit and ODOT and the developer, um, or the applicant, and that's, I think it needs to work it out. Not sure where the city fits in there.
Because even when we talked about sidewalk across the road here, we didn't have a say with all of that. I'm addicted to that. They've got their standards, that's, it's got their standards. I don't know that it's gonna be, sort of like the divorce, but it's gonna be, they're not gonna go over to a fair law or something, but.
Yes, sir.
They're just asking them to pay for it.
Okay. Is there any additional deliberations amongst commissioners? Okay. You guys here to make a motion one way or the other? I'll do it.
Okay.
Uh, I move to approve case file number one dash P A R dash P C dash twenty-four. The three-lot partition as as specified in the staff report. I'll sign it. Any further discussion? Carter, would you please take your role?
Moreland?
Aye.
Sherman?
Aye.
With Mike.
Aye.
Motion fast.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Yeah, I believe that concludes that public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
No problem.
Alright. Last but not least, we've got case file number two dash C S dash A C dash twenty-four. The applicant is Apex Home Solutions, and again, this is a, uh, follows the same public hearing rules that we read at the beginning. And if I can get there, if we're ready for a staff report, I think we can do that.
Mr. Chair, um, as you mentioned, this is plan five two, C S P C twenty-four. It's a residential deck condition for a property located at five twenty-five Southwest Lindhurst. Now, I'll have to go over here, uh, just maybe clarify that there is one replacement deck on the south side of the home. It's shown by this image here. That is not subject to your review. That O specifically exempts those replacements.
That's from deck, sorry, that's deck one.
That proposed, that proposed deck one is not subject to this decision. What is subject to your decision tonight is proposed deck two. This is this area shown right here. The applicable criteria are listed on the screen here. Um, site's in the R4 zone and has a PEO overlay as well as the coastal shore and those overlay, which is why um, you are in this tonight. Um, staff will leave the application for performance with those criteria and met all the applicable criteria in those underlying zones. Uh, no public comment has been received since this.
Alright. Would the applicant, uh, the applicant like to present some testimony?
I would love to.
If you can sign in if you would, please.
Fortunately, it is my luck.
You're right.
I am.
This, for the record, my name is Ken Zettman. My wife Donna and I just put our life savings into this house up top on West Lindhurst, and effectively, you know, got it back up to where the windows are going to blow it over. The only thing that the record doesn't show is that there was previously a deck five feet to the west of the house into that shoreline area that was demoed. You know, many parts of it are still there, but it was demoed by the previous owners of the house a number of years ago, and the deck number one has been rebuilt exactly in the, to the inch of where it was before. The only thing we did differently in it was the footings are way, way over engineered just because having spent my first year here seeing the velocity of wind and rain. You know, we used twenty-two inch sommelotus and dug them down so that it called for a twelve inch footing, and I increased it significantly just because, like I said, I was impressed by the eighty-five mile velocity winds I saw. So, everything was done reover engineered. I was surprised because this is really within the footprint of the house, short of eighteen inches on the one corner. So, I was amazed that this would trigger the geotech, and there was already a geotech in the deck that preceded it. So, the five thousand dollars that this coastal permit required to have a geotech come out there, and fifty phone calls to just get them there, and to all that was required to do it was just seemed way over the top for a hundred and twenty-five foot, very small deck. We kept it within footprint just to keep it as low key as possible. All that having been said, you know, as the geotech report showed, we're well back of the setbacks, erosion wasn't an issue there. The design was really solid. Fortunately, the reason above the house is it's sitting on very much the salt, which given on very risk averse was important. The only request I have is that what I was surprised about when I read the geotech report was that when my, when it gets approved, because it's pretty, not a whole lot to prevent it, that's my hope. And again, I'm using the same twenty-one inch wide tiers. When I dig them down, I'm now going to have to spend another fifteen hundred dollars to have the geotech and wait five days, ten days, whatever amount of time it takes for them to get there, to have them go, oh, that's firm enough. I've got the most competent contractor, they had some solution, these guys are phenomenal. So, the only requests I really have are twofold of the conditions that you put on here, which is that when my contractor digs down to the solid the salt or to original grade, which is very easy to tell, and he's an extraordinarily anal diligent human being who will know that the three foot that he's at is very firm, original soil, that I do not have to spend another fifteen hundred dollars to have a geotech come down and go, oh, it's firm soil. I mean, the guy is extraordinary, the oversize of the four wall tiers that we're putting in, I would love very much, given that so screw is the last remaining income I have now that I'm retired, that I can preserve that, that. And the only other issue he raised was the existing front of the house has, you know, the original soils and gravel that's right there in front of the house on the side of the west footing. And he's saying that we should underneath the deck put three inches of additional rock, crushed rock, to disperse, to prevent erosion if the deck allows slabs. Currently, there is no deck there, so rain hits it dramatically straight out with wind and all the elements. The foliage and material there is not eroding in any way, shape, or form. If you look at any of the pictures in the geotech report, it's flat. And the notion with, you know, ninety percent of that covered with a, within Apex Deck, you know, the material, very little water is going to come down through that deck to it, and certainly the velocity and the rose of capacity of that water is going to be diminished by the deck being above it. I just put in brand new drainage and everything there with gutters all the way around building, tight line lines to carry water away very smoothly. So, again, those are the only two issues that I was hopeful that I can be original grade undisturbed. Put in my four tiers and just get this complete. So, that's my request, and I'm more than open to any questions anyone has.
Right.
Really kind of that, I mean, it's seven feet, uh, width within the footprint of that, eight line inches.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the afternoon? Including that?
Yeah, I have one comment in regard to those requests. So, the way this works with these applications, and I appreciate that this is maybe overkill on the geotech analysis for this deck, and I appreciate the additional cost, trust me. We, we as the city engineer simply take the recommendations from your geotech and see whether they are reasonable recommendations, and that's what we've adopted as conditions.
Right.
So, we didn't, we didn't go out and do our own test bits for it to confirm anything, right? We just are relying on the work that your geotechnical engineers. We said that that looks like an acceptable set of recommendations, which means that we're not really, we're not really the right people to ask to change those recommendations.
Right.
It's, but I think what we could do is we could, we could revise the conditions to re, you know, upon some sort of revision from your geotechnical engineer.
Yeah, he certainly does.
We can be open to some revision to those, those specific conditions.
Okay.
Because the liability is on your geotechnical engineer, right? Like if, if they sign off and say, yeah, I don't need to come and do this additional inspection, and it fails, that's, that's on them. So, it's, it's really their, their question to answer.
Yeah, but, you know, to me, it's, it's just, I mean, there's no question that it's wonderful, and if it wasn't a stupid fifteen hundred dollar man put a stick in it, that feels bad, right? I mean, the one thing, if you put a derameter on that, you're going to bust it. He's trying, he's got his little probe, and he puts a probe down, it's without resistance, feels right. And any good contractor, it's a common sense question. It's not about, and again, I'm so overkill with forty-five percent more of the footing, but but if it's not within your purvey, then I'll pay the extra fifteen hundred dollars and complete it. It just made sense to me, and I thought I'd ask while I was.
No, no, good question. Yeah, and I think, you know, had, and we had this conversation two weeks ago, and we were able to talk with your geotech, and they submitted something back to say, you know what, we're fine with it, you don't need to do that.
So, essentially, I'll call him tomorrow, assuming this gets approved, and ask if he can modify that to trust in the skill set, and if he sends a note, can I just send that on to you?
Yeah, and what we would need, yep, and what we would need to do is just revise, revise that specific condition. And that condition is, I'll have to look up which.
Well, I've gone with it's eight ten.
Okay, so we revised A ten to instead say requires this, I guess, this fall inspection by your geotechnical engineer to say, you know, we can, we can waive that condition per the confirmation from your geotechnical engineer that that's not necessary.
Like I said, it's, it's worth a call, my hunch is it's part of how he makes living. He is a good liar, but a late, and so he's not signing off on it unless he gets paid very well, but come down when he's ready.
That's a pretty standard, that's a pretty standard requirement, just because when they do their test bits, even though, you know, it is all the salt in the, they're pretty aware that, and there could be a soft spot or something.
Well, no, no, there, there is salt. In other words, anytime about a disturbed thing when they dug the footings in originally, and in, in his report, he said the top eighteen to thirty inches is, is filled. Not filled, but it's disturbed soil. So, there's no question that you're digging to, to the soil until you are putting your sommelotus down deep enough until it's on original grade, or if you're forging it and hit the salt, then you know you got good grade. But all I was requesting is I have an extraordinarily qualified Apex Home Solutions guy is insane. I mean, the guy is of the quality, I've never seen anyone as analistic, the work he did was phenomenal. And for me to have to hang for five days, and I took fifteen calls to get him to come in, and then five grand out just to have him say what he already knew, because he just did the neighbor six months ago, and he did this one years. I mean, the geology didn't change. So, to get screwed for a five thousand dollar court, I know it's coastal, I know it's there, but went through the addition of another fifteen hundred dollars. If it could be avoided with a degree of common sense, there are no decent contractors with only four holes to dig, that aren't going to take the time to dig great, to dig great. And I was just trying to use common sense, that's all.
I appreciate that, too.
Yeah, that's it.
Any other, any questions? Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
All right, is there any testimony from those in favor of the application? Hearing none, anybody wish to testify in opposition to the application?
There's nobody on, is there?
No.
Hearing none, there's, once again, nothing to rebut? Anybody wish the record, wish to request that the record remain open for final additional written testimony?
I have a question about that. Based on what the city planner described. If, if we do that, I'm not sure we will, do we need to keep the record open? Until we get an answer.
I don't think so. No, you'd essentially, you're relying on your engineering staff to, you know, review. Again, the way it works is that we would, we would receive a letter from the applicant's geotechnical engineer and say, yeah, we're fine with this one approach that is different than what we submitted. They would submit that to us, our, the city geotechnical engineer review it, agree with it or not. And if they agree with it, we, we, we would have a condition that says if we agree with that, we would strike that condition, basically.
Okay. If we can, yeah, I agree, we can tweak that. Anybody wish to, wish to request the record remain open? Okay. The public hearing is now closed, and commission deliberations. Okay, I think we should do it earlier we can to tweak that to avoid, you know, per, per Mr., per Mr.,
Hello.
I keep that.
Hello.
I think we should, I think we should do it, it's a guess, and, yeah, and see if we can try to, whatever way you can shake it to avoid that, that would be fantastic.
Or maybe negotiate the cost out.
Yeah. But it's going to be, yeah, I mean, it'd have to be up to, up to you and the engineer that you talk to.
I'll call, my hunch is just going to say, no, I got, I'm responsible for it, and I'm, I spend money. I mean, I'll dig it out as soon as you guys say, hey, okay. Or my contract will currently not. And, and, and then if he says yes, I'll submit a letter to you and go ahead and forward or not. But if, if, I don't expect you all to say.
Well, I guess I'll just throw this in for info. I remember in our hearing on twenty-nine, there were those three geo reviews where, yeah, and it's the revised, I guess some revised comments from their geotechnical engineer, kind of the same effect. To say that we don't really need to do that fall inspection work there, but it's, it's real similar, and it's possible that.
I'm going to beg. Yeah, I'm going to beg, please, they're just, you know, like I said, I'm trying to bring it in as soon as possible.
Would we need to tweak any of our conditions in that report to reflect that?
I think we want to just add, well, I think we want to modify condition one A to just say, one A or one B. Which is the building permit or issued into the argument. So, the way, yeah, the way this, this is set up is that you've got kind of three bites at the apple for your geotech. So, prior to the issuance of the building permit, they come up with that inspection. That's what you were talking about, but then again, once it's built, they come on again, come on again to make sure it was built, you know, built per, again, per their recommendations. So, I think we can, we could attach that to both of those, if that's what you're thinking. I don't know that they're going to go that far, but it's worth, it's worth just saying, you know, upon, you know.
Yeah, the order saw the other deck built, and said it was amazing.
Okay.
He said he's never seen a better geotech in his life. So, I mean, I can't imagine he's going to suspect that. But again, I'm, I'll call him reasonably, but I just need to know if I can move forward, i.e. the permit. And if I have to, I'm not going to waste any more time over fifteen hundred dollars of, of my expense and just trying to do it, do it right, actually overbuild it, and, and accomplish it as reasonably as I can.
You know, maybe just for the record, the way this is written, I'll read this into the records so we can kind of deliberate on that. It says, prior to, this is A, one A, prior conditions of building permits. The final review letter from the geotechnical engineer is required to confirm the final design for site grading, drainage control, and deck foundations is in accordance with their recommendations. Still the case that it'll be in accordance with their recommendations. It does reference exhibit B, so we would strike that, and I think if, what they submitted tomorrow or next week is different, that's still their recommendation, and we would be open to accepting that. And that's, it's not a discretion or anything, and I think it's okay, it's okay to leave that outside of this decision's point of technical, geotechnical analysis. The same thing is the case with exhibit B. So, again, if you're able to convince your geotechnical engineer to change their recommendation, there's not really enough that we can do.
Yeah, and there is no additional drainage can add. The only thing that was being done in the way of construction that the geotech had any view of whatsoever is the excavation of the four sommelotus for the foundational thing, and his comment as to there. He did discuss if I was going to do additional fill, how it needed to be done, how it needed to be done, but none of that is a part of this, will be asked to be done. There aren't, all the drainage on the property is complete, we're simply adding a deck that sits on those four, I mean, on the four tiers.
So, I think, I think, apologies, I think if, if we were able to tweak these conditions to, you know, for the city to facilitate the applicant's request to, you know, on the final review part of the engineering stuff, that would be as much as we could, reason we do.
I appreciate that. So, then I recommend that in a last sentence, we change in accordance with their recommendations and strike a reference to exhibit B instead of saying in accordance with their recommendations or as maybe modified by their geotech.
Okay, I'm successful in my tweeting. I'll get that letter to you guys tomorrow, but, yeah. Now, I did have one quick question on notes, not the appropriate one, may I ask it?
Go for it.
Hey, assuming that the three of you approve the two C S P C twenty-four, am I okay to call my guy to excavate tomorrow, or am I waiting physically for a permit to release?
I don't know the answer to that, I gotta, let's hold on for a moment. I think you might want to call city staff tomorrow and ask that one.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, any other commission deliberations?
Anything, Scott?
Not related to the planning commission? But.
Is it related in this case?
Related to this case.
Yeah.
Has this been in the architectural committee yet?
The Dark Angel Committee.
The architecture.
Oh, yeah, all of them, yeah, a good fact, months ago.
You have it right.
Yeah, before we even started, before we started, yeah.
Okay.
Everything was approved, all of it.
All right, anything else? Okay, I'll move that we approve the application with the site modifications to the conditions that we discussed regarding A and B, regarding the, the engineer review. That sound right?
I second that.
Okay. We're in further discussion. Carter, would you please take your role?
Sherman?
Aye.
Withmeyer?
Aye.
Moreland?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Yeah. I think we'll, we'll see the notes here, well, we'll get the opportunity to see the revised conditions.
Okay. They'll be in the final order.
Okay, all right, I'll come and sign that.
I guess, yeah, you'll, you'll get a chance to see it.
I'll, I'll make sure.
And I think, sorry, you only kind of. Yeah. Figure what I'm just saying. So, condition E is to be revised, it's like prior conditions, building permits, the decks are, I don't know, the other no, actually, you know, here is required, it's confirmed the final design, certain creating, any virtual or deck foundations, it's more important that, with their recommendations, or as maybe modified by their geotech.
Okay, yeah.
The B is modified same.
Yeah.
The B is.
Yes, he's on that. If your geotechnical engineer is on board, he can first to.
Okay.
I guess he's good. But he has the right to know, I don't know if I have.
Should we take that?
I'm rooting, I'm rooting for it, yeah, I'm rooting for it.
You know.
No offense to the engineers, but.
Given that property location, whenever we take an engineer, I, I want to make sure.
Okay.
That sort of comes up there.
Yeah.
Do you have any unfinished business? Do we have any unfinished business?
Well, I don't have this unfinished business, but we had talked about possibly changing the data that we did in November and it was kind of hanging out there.
Yeah, I did mention, yeah, I'm not gonna be here, that's, that is good unfinished business. I'm not gonna be here in November, I'm gonna be in San Diego for that meeting and I know CA is not here tonight, but we've got October and then November, so we wanna look and see if there's a possible alternative date for the November planning commission meeting. Because the week is scheduled for.
I have it on the thirteen.
Yeah, the thirteenth. I will be gone, I can do it, I can do the week before or the week after. But not that week.
It's scheduled for November.
It is currently scheduled for November thirteenth.
Twenty is, that's, that's not the week of Thanksgiving.
No, that's, that's the week before Thanksgiving, so that's basically.
Thanksgiving weekend, before Thursday, Friday, that's a little straight.
Yeah, it's kind of weird.
Either of those options.
Okay. Do we, how, how, how does the sixth work for you?
Sixth works fine.
So it's the, if February's on board with the sixth or the twentieth?
Is that okay, city?
I think we make it okay with the city.
What time is the press commission in?
Not on the sixth.
How about this, how about we, how about we have Carla reach out to the planning commission, including CA and just we'll get, you know, the sixth or the twentieth on November and we'll see who, what consensus is, and go from there. I'm good for either one of them, but would you, please do that currently? Okay. Do we have any new business?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Okay.
To the new planner and the engineer, Harper likes, we've got an application and I'm a part owner of that. So where are we, coming up in October on that?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. I'm just not familiar.
Well, John, your partner, John, had it, I mean, we're waiting on his response, I think that's, that's the only thing I know that we're waiting on.
Okay.
For that, and we're burning time, so.
When did you submit that to him?
It's been over a month ago, I think.
Do you know, because.
I, I don't know the exact date, Kim, don't hold me that, I don't, I don't know.
Last, last responses I saw was that the application was not considered complete, so the time clock hadn't started.
Did you, did you hear that? So the last one was that?
Well, Mark had a conversation with John about it not being complete. And then the question was, well, the fire department hasn't responded. And I showed him in the, in the DBZO where they've got X amount of time and then after that, it's deemed complete. That's pretty much what happened with this one, I think, but that, we're past that. We should be coming up on, on the October agenda.
We can check with John.
If you would, if we, we, we haven't heard anything back, so we're just kind of in limbo waiting.
Yeah, so I guess you guys kind of spurred my memory. I, I was under the impression that we were waiting for me, for your team to provide some more information.
From, from our engineer thing?
I believe so. So I'll, I'll follow up with John and confirm that.
So I will slide a note to Mark, if we're, if the star pulled up, we'll, we'll go to the fire fact. We just wanna get this thing going, so interest rates are coming down, we want to build down there, so. Get going.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other new business?
I'm gonna put that under public comments.
Okay, let's go to public comments.
That's not where we do this, it's public comment, okay.
He's gonna be threatening me with a hammer again.
Okay, are there any public comments?
No.
Nope. City council liaison report.
I did go, I gave a report. There was a lot of discussion about the end result of people hills on, on the, on the one oh one when all those spaces are approved, four hundred and some houses, three people.
But the, like the transportation stuff?
It, it's, well, do we put a stoplight there? Do we need to put a stoplight there? I mean, that, I don't see, it's gonna, or, or that's gonna have to weigh in, but you can have, I mean, that's gonna be the busiest intersection coming off of the hill.
My understanding, my understanding is that, that went through, what, twenty eighteen or something?
Yeah, they've already weighed in, I believed that at some point, if I saw correctly, one of the phases does require a stoplight. But we're talking about.
Down the road.
Yes.
Yeah, because right now they're only putting thirty houses in, so.
Right, so there's, they're talking about, I know they're about five to, five, actually, there's about six to, there's a lot of phases.
Because I can see ten, twelve car wait to turn, turn on the one oh one there. And, and, you know, coming out of Little Waco, there's two hundred and sixty of us in Little Waco, but, you know, I try to get in Little Waco, it's three cars at a time.
But they did a study, they did.
It's part of the master plan.
It's, it's available, you, we can, we have to.
Well, the council has some questions, but I answered as best I could, but.
They, they are also obligated to submit like a supplemental memo with each phase, which they did for phase two. And that memo from Kelson and Associates, who is their track manager, said everything's still fine, everything's still checked, and so when phase three comes around, we'll do the same thing. Eventually, they won't, you know, they will trigger some improvement, I think that's the way it's set.
And the other thing that concerned those, they had thirty percent of the vibration down.
Yeah, which, I mean, I didn't, I don't know what to tell the city council, this, I mean, it's been, it's been approved, they can do it too.
Cities are required to grow, ask the state. So, we may not like it, but.
Well, now, that, that's gonna, you know, they, they have requirements for infrastructure schools and so forth, and water system. Nothing about hospitals.
Oh.
Or medical care, or any of that rock that matters, like grocery stores.
Maybe that'll be the next browsing call.
Well, you know, and, because if we're required to grow much beyond two thousand people, when do you need a grocery store here? But where are you gonna put it? That's just something that's gonna have to happen, because the state guidelines don't cover everything that matters.
Wild West.
The next time you guys update your comprehensive plan, that's a weird conversation.
Yes.
Your zoning has nothing to do with that, right?
Right.
You can carve out.
There's only a lot of sport now, it's just that nobody, there's no market for it. You know, there's no, there's no, what goes in first, the, the, the food service or the grocery store, the medical care or the housing? And then what happens in the neighborhood, the housing goes in first, now you got a real problem.
Typically, it's the homes.
Right.
You need the, you need the beds there to, you know, support those huge investments that those commercial uses have to make. That's what we see, that's what we see, and you're right, for a while, you kind of suffer here, you know, kind of consider you're important.
Where would you put it?
That's a good question.
I mean, there's, that's my issue with people, they just don't place a bill.
Right.
You know, if you go move back in that TC property back there, take five miles of that and make a people back.
What's going in that about storage facility?
Stores.
More storage.
Storage facility, but you, you will, you will see that come to you, because the part of it is not. He's been working anywhere, you're not for working.
Yeah, I heard that, that was.
He's working on the application that will come to you.
More storage, huh?
More storage.
More market for that than just for a grocery store.
They, yeah, they own the, they own the one up in Lincoln City too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm told that he's already got a lot of those units booked.
Interesting.
It's bananas.
That's not what garages are for in the state, or.
But certainly not cars.
They're not for cars, they're, they're not, what are they for? John, plus more John, because I know that's three storage units, I'm still moving in my house.
So did that help our way of complaint, that knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, because I've been watching it, we approved so, uh, something here, I think it was before your time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We approved something here, I've been watching it thinking, that doesn't.
Yeah, well, that, that, that council is a separate subject that, that I was listening in on, that, that there was, they were working on unapproved territory.
Okay, right, oh, yeah, we have a full-time planner, whenever this response, that this will, will be making sure of approval, are in here too.
Oh, fabulous.
He gonna bring a bag with him, yeah.
Me enforcer.
You don't just bring Casey, but maybe you need to go.
I came from Montana, I think I'm gonna go.
There you go.
You keep.
We're gonna fit right in.
All right, I think he's got his background trash here.
Fishing poles.
What's that?
Truck racks have guns and fishing poles.
True.
Anything else to report on from the city council?
No, that was it. It was a long conversation, I was.
Yeah.
They were a bit of a trouble.
Do we have any reports from the city planner and city administrator?
I don't know.
I kind of do, sorry, kind of leads into what happened at the council session. My concern is that council, you guys are to report kind of what's going on, but bringing up new subjects and new concerns, really we should be safe for discussions and whether or not you guys are going to bring them. So for example, when we come to a meeting, we want you to obviously report out on what you do, but that was a brand new, kind of like, no preparation, just got everybody without being able to prepare. And now we've got everybody concerned about something there's no reason to be concerned about. Because this stuff is already water under the bridge, if you will, there was a transportation study done, all those things.
Didn't sound like it was, but.
I understand that, but I would appreciate that if you guys are going to bring up stuff like that, that you go, you come to me first, because it was just, it was time and situation that really was not the appropriate time for it.
I thought that might be the case, but yeah.
Yeah, so I would just ask, you know, just to keep your reports, just to the reports, I mean, Landon will be doing what Kit did, which was providing those monthly reports, so this is much make it easier, less confrontational for you as well. Because then you're not forced to address things that you don't have an answer to either, so. Like, why did you do it this way? We wouldn't want them to do that to you either.
I don't want them to do that to me, I like confrontation.
Yeah, I'll give it to them.
So my understanding.
I understand that, I, I, I respect that, thank you.
So my understanding is that us at the meeting, the city council, you need a still option.
Yes, and I think so.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, yeah, because if the staff's doing a report, lovely, a written report should be fine.
Um, one of the things that will happen, and something I have to, to address, is that generally if somebody from a committee or commission is in attendance, they're put on the spot, and I will work on that.
I would look, I, I might bring this up under planning commission concerns, I'm gonna get to that, but is there anything else to report from your staff?
I don't think so.
I think you are, I'm too, so.
Oh, I know, you can do that anytime, I'll take that, anytime. I'm just real glad Landon's here and started. That's been good to have in our corner, I'm looking forward to great things to come, it'll be a little slow. I did talk to him about your first caller, what you guys have been working on.
Yeah, I've been.
Now, it is not top of the priority, but he is gonna look at what you've done, because you've already done a lot of work on it, so.
Yeah, that one would be nice to resurrect at some point, maybe in the off-season, you know, none of us building everything all at the same time, interest rates go back up or something.
I've also asked Landon to take a look at our fee schedule, the way we do fees right now. And the charges and the way we do them right now are a lot of cumbersome, ask Carla. I mean, we track time where we wanna get more like there's a base fee, you know, Landon had some suggestions from Kalaswell and then we had some suggestions from John and, and make sure that not only are we capturing what's appropriate to be charged for work that we do, but to make sure that we're not spending a lot of administration time at the end, trying to collect fees if we didn't, we took it a positive and it wasn't enough, so.
Would it potentially look something like, like, here's a, like a, like a menu of, like, I mean, like a, okay, like a flat, okay, we do this, it's this much, this is this much and so on and so forth. And kind of a similar.
I mean, it's really, it's funny because the sky's a limit on how we do it, but there's a lot of good sources out there. One place I came from would say in the base fee, you get so many hours of planning time, so many hours of engineering time, so many hours of attorney time if needed, and that was it. There was no, at the end of it, you pay, didn't, didn't charge what was I precharged more, that was, that was that.
I guess my only input on that would be, not, I'm, I'm an appointed volunteer planning commissioner, not elected to anything or hired to do anything, but my only in, input on that would be whatever fees, that's get, fee schedule or whatever, if it gets tweaked, it, it just be as fair as possible to both parties, to make sure the city's getting, getting the work done and getting paid for it, and that the applicant's not getting, you know, overcharged unnecessarily or anything.
We'll have to have Landon share Kalaswell's with you, that, because I liked the way they did it, like they would have a base fee and then if it was like a duplex or, or. Yeah, they would charge a per unit, or if they did a particular, what was it, the conditional use, where then you had like, we'd call it out, I call it an out of carpet, that's where it's like, if, if, if you, you, you have a base, but if you also needed a deck or if you also needed a dock or.
Yeah, for coastal shorelands, if they're doing six activities within, you know, what's required to be reviewed versus one, we are then breaking down each of those six activities, conditioning more activities, so it should be most likely a base fee for coastal shorelands, potentially plus X amount of dollars per additional activity because we're including, because the review's getting bigger.
So there's another consideration, and I don't know about Kalaswell or anything like that, but normally the planning is at city service, but that assumes the city's sort of revenue, we're user-based. And, and so the planning fees pretty much technically cover the cost of the planning function. And that may change things a lot.
I, I would hope that would be incorporated into the.
I, I'm not sure we can ever get to a point where we charge, we can reasonably charge it off, because it's to cover the planning function. But can we do better than we are, possibly? I know the.
Close.
Yeah, I mean, and, and it's definitely something to do, we need to review all our fees within the city, it's just that Landon's here, Zach.
And water works that way. Water bills its, its usage and its user, its user base, so, I mean, the planning function only functions or need, or is triggered when there's a need for it, so the, the need ought to cover the cost, except for if you're a full-time permanent employee, so there's.
Sure.
Overhead kickbells.
Right, and that's, that, that, you're right, that's the goal, not to cover his costs, but they cover what he reasonably, what time it takes, what time carbon it takes, you know.
Yeah, because in the slow months when there's little revenue, and yet I'm working on things like public liquidity and other things that need to be looked at. Updates and. Enforcement. Tax amendments.
Enforcement.
Yeah, violations, that sort of thing.
Well, you, you have a, you put in all the zoning changes too, the general, there's only a lot of changes and additions and city plans and updates and master plans and all that, which just goes off, even if nothing's going on.
Exactly.
Nothing, ever nothing, nothing ever stops in this city, I don't care.
Yeah, it's never nothing.
Never nothing, thank you, that's what I wanted to say, it's never nothing. So he's gonna be working on, that's kind of what we talked about, some of the stuff, and a couple of the, the other thing that he's gonna be looking at is how we process and handle building permits. And I, I, I actually just see it in the format issuing specific slack equity. Just right now, we go, okay, county is yours, and then that's it. We don't know when that goes in, we don't know if they're following the conditions, we just have to assume that the county's checking that. We're gonna be looking for things the county's not necessarily looking at. So we're gonna look at the old agreement, that the only one we have is just signed from nineteen ninety-one, we need to revise it. So these are just some of the things that I've wanted us to do for the city, but with only a part-time planner, he, he had no time. You guys know, see, all the stuff needs to be done to you, so. So having, having Landon and having Zach as an additional resource, I think will, will help the city overall.
Well, yes.
Well, I mean, when you're dealing, you know, with a part-time position and it's a full-time world out there, it's, it's hard to do, because with, Kit would show back up on Tuesday, you know, he's four days behind already, you know.
He would have to catch up before.
He was digging out a hole every day, and you, and you can't get, when you call it, I'd say, hey, I need some help here, where do I go? You know, you don't get an answer, it's like, well, I'll have to get back to you. Well, that doesn't help, and it just makes things worse on ours too.
All right, any other staff reports? Uh, planning commission concerns? Who would have asked?
Okay.
Nothing?
I have a concern, but I don't necessarily wanna talk about it, but it is a concern. Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven.
Yes.
And, and it's confusing to me if, what our purpose is gonna be, if anything, and.
Was that the, the housing one that we've been talking about?
Yeah, that's the governor's.
So, on that, you know, you, you hear some of these hearings go by and you see some of these conditions that are negotiated. There won't be any negotiation, they'll just say, I wanna make this condition, and it'll happen.
The adjustments, correct.
Yeah, except in, in the coastal overlap.
Right.
Um, so, you know, nobody has requested more than ten changes, so they're always gonna get what they want without our input.
And some of these things you guys are used to seeing, won't actually come to you, because they have that limited land use decision, I'm just looking at that today. They can, making some notes and like that.
Can we get ahead of that by typing this for zoning regulations?
Do what?
Can we get ahead of that by cutting up some of the zoning rules?
I don't think so either, um, because yeah, I don't think so, um, from what, everything I know, Zach can speak to, maybe better than me, cause he probably followed it closer than I did, but they're just gonna tie their hands on some of this stuff.
Yeah, and, you know, they're talking about affordable housing and, and I can understand the need for that, but, um, I was in Maui last month and, and there's manufactured home loaned multiple, you know, is necessary, and that's what they can do quickly. Or what's going on in notice, you know, they have all those, and they're doing a fair job, but there's still simple life manufacturing homes, you know, it's like a river. Or will.
Will.
I think, I think what, you know, the, what the recent statutes mean by affordable housing is, is not low-income housing, right, just to be clear, right, it's, it's market rate, it's the market rate housing, and the, the goal is to um, kind of slow the skyrocketing price of homes, which is totally not affordable, so I think just, um, I don't think the intent is that it just be like low-income or manufactured homes.
Or someone on the river bar is gonna take care of that for us.
With regard to Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven, I know some jurisdictions, uh, there is, there is some room in here to, um, be excruciating, if you have a, if you have a past practice of granting adjustments, if you can show the state that you've been pretty little about granting adjustments in the past, that's one way to get around it. If not, I think you're kind of stuck, yeah.
According to some of our city councils, we're pretty.
With what we're going through right now, we won't be able to get that, with what we're going through right now, there is no way the state can grant this.
If you need some, I'll come back and ask for various, if that helps.
It's not hilarious, so either way.
Glad to help you guys out. Sidewalk.
Alright.
But there is some elements of it that I wanna actually, um, you know, say, what does this look like for us, because I don't, I read Kit's reports, and I don't think that we ever came through into what does this look like for people guy? What do we need to specifically do or adopt? I do see some things in there that, you know, it mostly along the lines of limited use decisions and stuff like that, so I just wanna get some clarity on that, so that's probably gonna come back to you. So thank you for bringing it up, even though I knew you didn't want to, got a money either, but at least we don't have to fall under the climate equitable friendly community until we get the hills booked out.
Does, does that give us a bit of pressure?
January with all, it's like, I don't know, is it five thousand, is it three thousand or five, thirty-five thousand, what is it now?
Oh, I thought it was higher than that. Oh, even with that.
If it's ten thousand?
People don't put a four or five.
Yeah, no, that one was ten.
If it's ten thousand, we're good.
Lincoln City's not ten thousand.
They don't, I thought they had it all under it.
They're only ten nine or something like that.
Oh, well, then they have all under. But for the last quarter, it was.
Lincoln County's only fifty-two.
Is it ten?
I'll get, I'll get back to you. Alright. Was, was that what I had?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that one's been, that one's, that is gonna be an ongoing one.
We won't know about that one until the year into it.
We only have six more months, or what is it, twenty twenty-five, we have to start doing some of this? Not that far away.
The only concern I'm gonna bring up is, uh, I think we got the November meeting thing dealt with, if Carla sends out an email for for all of us for the sixth or the twentieth, and see which one works, and I guess the other thing, I actually forgot what I was gonna say, but it had something to do with us going to the city council meetings. And my under, oh, yeah, my understanding is, uh, as city council, or what I like to do as city council liaison when it's my month, is I show up and, you know, if they want me to come up and talk, I'll come up and tell them that I don't really know what to tell them, because they could read it all right in the email. I do like to go to those, even sometimes when it's not my month, just to, especially if I'm looking at the agenda on the website or something, I go, okay, is there anything that's gonna be pertinent to us? And that's why I like to report back, um, but I, yeah, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go out of my way to, um, bring up any particular topics or engage with city council anymore than they ask me to, um, especially if I'm not prepared for whatever the discussion might be, which is gonna be most of the time. I'm not getting paid to memorize all the city ordinances and stuff, so I'm not probably gonna, I'm gonna look them up and I'm gonna have to look them up.
They'll probably say what the ordinance is saying, cause they're looking at it all the time. They'll tell you what the ordinance is saying, cause they're looking at it all, all the time.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I guess my, my only concern with, um, interacting with city council is uh, I'll tell them what, when, at least on my part, I'll tell them what I know and what they ask me, I'll answer at the best of my ability, but I have no qualms about saying, I have no idea, and you'll have to ask me another time or ask somebody else, so I haven't had to yet, and but there are quite a few city councils on, on our city council that are newer, or a few of them that are newer, I think, in first term. I don't think we've had any current city electives that have been on more than a term, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, the mayor has, she's in her second term, but is mayor, but she was on the council before. And councillor Rec, I think, is two terms?
I think she's two terms.
This will be, this is her second term.
So there's a lot of, like the master developer, the plant development up there, there's a lot of the councillors that they weren't around when that original thing was going through, so that's probably where it comes from.
It's gonna change the nature of the city.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna seriously change the nature of the city.
Okay, last call, anybody else got anything to comment on? Alright, meeting is adjourned.